Good evening and welcome to the February 9, 2021 Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and recite the pledge? "A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So first on the agenda tonight, we have one public comment. I will read that out loud. This is from Diane Swanson. She wrote, "Since seniors are not enjoying any of the perks of being seniors, senior prom, senior trip, and of course, a respectable graduation ceremony, what is happening to the senior class money which they have earned through fundraisers? Since many parents have lost their jobs and money is tight, why don't you take the money and pay for the senior yearbooks and graduation robes? Something is better than nothing. $90 for a yearbook, which will be thinner than a comic book. Let's be fair." We just got this public comment today, so I can pass this on to the high school. I think they're starting to address some of these senior end-of-the-year events, so we can get some answers. To Ms. Swanson, and next on the agenda, we have a program report, social-emotional learning, and I will pass this on to Dr. Wiles.
Thanks, Dr. Rivera. I am actually going to hand off to our Director of People Personnel Services, Mrs. Lisa Knowles, who has assembled an awesome team of PPS providers, who are going to share some information with us tonight about our social-emotional learning and mental health services here in Gilderlin. So, Mrs. Knowles, I'm going to turn it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to present tonight. Joining me tonight are Anna Bartlett, School Counselor at Farnsworth Middle School. Let me make sure I present here. Kirsten Idle Barkman, School Psychologist at Gilderlin Elementary School. Tara Evangelista, Counselor at Pine Bush Elementary School. Ashley Kaplan and Karen Murphy, Counselors at Gilderlin High School. Catherine Rochetti, School Psychologist, I'm sorry, School Social Worker at Lynnwood Elementary School, and Jennifer Riley, School Counselor at Gilderlin Elementary School. We look forward to sharing with you the scope of our mental health continuum of services and how the district supports the social-emotional well-being of our students. So many professionals within a school help to support schools' positive mental health. These include our school counselors, psychologists, social workers, school nurses, and other specialized instructional support personnel. For the purposes of this presentation, we are focusing on the mental health professionals who serve in critical leadership roles in terms of school safety, positive school climate, and providing school-based mental health services. Their training and expertise help link mental health, behavior, environmental factors, instruction, and learning. Each of these professionals help to create school environments that are safe, supportive, and conducive to learning. Each may deliver similar services, such as counseling, social-emotional skill instruction, and consultation with families and teachers. However, each profession has its own unique focus based upon its specializations, which result in different, albeit interrelated, services. The specific services and expertise of individual practitioners may vary, and we will highlight the core competencies and specialized instructional services of each profession. This slide highlights the staffing structure across the district. We have 12 school counselors, 10 school psychologists, and eight social work providers. And three of our psychologists serve in different capacities as CSC chairperson and CPSC chairperson, and our elementary school psychologists also oversee our school-based problem-solving team process. Supporting students takes a team. Academic success takes more than an effective teacher and rigorous curriculum. Many students experience barriers to learning. The Social and Emotional Developmental Guidelines adopted by the Board of Regents in July 2011 acknowledged the value of strong people-personnel services and the relationship of those services to academic success. I think we have seen really the result of the mental health impact on our students and staff through this coronavirus pandemic. Research underlying social and emotional development and learning suggests that a child who is anxious, afraid, preoccupied, depressed, or alienated is a child whose courage or ability to learn is impaired. The student support team serves the whole child by utilizing their collaborative efforts in individual areas of expertise to promote academic and future success. In July 2017, New York State revised the state regulations related to school counseling programs. We embarked on a two-year endeavor to develop our K-12 school counseling plan. Beginning with the 2019-20 school year, each district shall have a comprehensive developmental school counseling guidance program for all students in kindergarten through grade 12. Each school district shall also ensure that all students in grades kindergarten through grade 12 have access to a certified school counselor. The plan may be implemented by a variety of stakeholders, teachers, teaching assistants, certified or licensed school psychologists, certified or licensed school social workers in cooperation with our school counselors, as truly ban a collaborative team effort. The Gilderlin K-12 Counseling Plan has been developed in compliance with the New York State Education Department Commissioner Regulations in alignment with our Gilderlin Board of Education District Priorities and the American School Counseling Association National Standards and Mindsets and Behaviors for Student Success. The primary goal is to support all students through our Tier One supports, such as classroom lessons on topics such as feelings identification, coping strategies, goal-setting, listening skills, problem-solving, developing career interests, getting along with others, and much, much more. This ASCA National Standards and Mindsets and Behaviors for Student Success focuses on the comprehensive developmental needs of children. There's a need to keep in mind what is developmentally appropriate for the age group and also match interventions to the needs and the level of the individual. The district has been observing positive outcomes for a preventative model of service delivery that addresses the social-emotional learning for all students. Social-emotional development and learning has an important role to play in making schools safe and maintaining a caring school climate, facilitating students' holistic development, and enhancing student motivation, self-expectations, and high achievement. This is accomplished through class lessons in prevention of mindfulness, self-regulation, mental wellness, social skills, problem-solving, feelings identification. Many of our practitioners consult with parents, staff, and teachers on students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, consult and collaborate with administrators throughout the school year, and share relevant information, provide behavioral support strategies, and monitor progress as the year progresses. School-based counseling is a short-term and solution-focused process. We work towards a goal and keep stakeholders updated throughout the process. Monitoring classroom behaviors through communication with teachers is key to the process and allows for consistent feedback and adjustments as needed. Our PPS providers are involved in many community-based programs designed to assist our families, such as Running Start, Backpacks for Success, which are both run through the Gilderlin YMCA, and assist families in preparing children for the beginning of the school year by providing school supplies and clothes. Weekend servings, which is run through the Gilderlin Food Pantry, provides food to families in need each weekend throughout the year. Our providers also support and develop behavior intervention plans and facilitate all individual and group counseling services. Is this Jenny or Tara?
Yep, this is me. Sorry about that. My name is Tara Evangelista, and I'm the School Counselor at Pine Bush Elementary School. I'm going to start by talking just a bit about the education and training required of a New York State certified school counselor. School counselors earn a minimum of a master's degree in school counseling, which includes a focus on both educating and counseling. This training allows us to function as a facilitator between parents, teachers, and students in matters concerning individual goals, abilities, and any areas needing improvement. School counselors provide services not only to students in need, but to all students. School counselors focus on helping students address their academic, personal, social, and career development goals and needs by designing, implementing, and evaluating a comprehensive school counseling program that promotes and enhances student success. School counselors work to promote safe learning environments for all members of the school community and regularly monitor the school climate. Effective school counseling programs are a collaborative effort between the school, counselor, teachers, families, and other educators to create an environment promoting student achievement, active engagement, equitable access to educational opportunities, and a rigorous curriculum for all students. The integral component of a school counselor's program is to provide support to all students. Preventative or proactive supports are implemented through whole-school programs focusing on character education and the development of social-emotional skills. Group and individual counseling situations are also provided to students in need of extra support and focus on specific skills development. In general, school counseling, individual and group support, is short-term and solution-focused. After a certain amount of time, generally about six weeks, if we believe that a student would benefit from additional support, we will discuss a referral with the family. Supports are offered in different ways depending on the age and developmental level of the student. Another requirement of the school counseling program is that each student in grades 6 through 12 meet with their counselor at least once a year to discuss classes, the student's progress toward graduation, and future plans. You'll hear more about this later in the presentation. At the elementary level, school counselors provide all of the services that you heard about on the previous slides, including individual and group counseling, responsive services, collaboration between teachers and parents, and much more. For our portion of the presentation, we would like to focus on our classroom lessons as it is a huge part of the counseling program at the elementary level. Classroom lessons are what drive our program. These lessons cover a variety of topics and mainly utilize the Second Step Program. Second Step is a research-based social-emotional learning curriculum that teaches the skills necessary for academic and social success. These skills are separated into four units: Skills for Learning, Empathy, Emotional Regulation, and Problem Solving. These lessons are engaging and interactive for our elementary-level students. Many of our lessons include home links, which are shared with parents or guardians following the lesson. These home links allow families to follow along with what their children are learning in school and provides a common language for parents to use as they strive to support their child's development at home. Career development is explored through classroom lessons as well. This happens through career interest inventories and the development of specific skills necessary to help students become successful in school, work, and life. These skills include managing strong emotions, solving problems, and setting goals. On our slide, we've included a few examples of some of the skills addressed in classroom lessons and how this information is shared with families. The poster on the left is from the first unit, Skills for Learning. This poster is directed toward kindergarten students and is presented at the beginning of the school year. Students learn how to focus attention, what it means to listen, and how to use self-talk. Once this language is taught, it's used throughout the school year. There are posters that display the skills taught for each unit in the Second Step Program. In the top slide on the right, you'll see a virtual Second Step classroom. This classroom was created by me for Pine Bush families and focuses on the Grade Three Empathy Unit. This virtual classroom includes a schedule of lessons and home links for parents to access information they need to support the lessons at home. At Pine Bush, I've shared these classrooms with families at all grade levels throughout the school year as we begin each new unit. Underneath the Second Step classroom is a virtual calm room, created and shared with Gilderlin Elementary School's families and students by Jenny Riley, who is going to talk a little bit more about that now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jenny Riley, and I am the School Counselor at Gilderlin Elementary School. As Tara mentioned, the picture on the right on the bottom is a virtual calm room that Dr. Idle Barkman and I created and shared with the Gilderlin Elementary School community through a newsletter and a school messenger. So you click a link to enter the calm room, and then you can click all the different images and be led to calming or mindfulness strategies. So for example, if you click on the fish tank, you are sent to a short video clip of an animated fish that deeply breathes in and out that you can follow along to. So this is just another example of a fun and helpful resource that we share with the community. Oops. We also wanted to share a slide about data, since data collection is really important in a school counseling program. Data collection can help drive interventions and can show effectiveness of the school counseling program. So our first piece of data is about ratios. The recommended ratio for a school counselor according to the American School Counselor Association is one school counselor for every 250 students. So as you can see on the screen, our numbers are higher than that, so our days are pretty busy and full. It's the same ratio for a school social worker, so we included those numbers as well. The three school counselors counted how many class lessons they were able to deliver from September through December 2020, and that number was approximately 430 class lessons. So we are really proud of that number and all the social-emotional learning that is happening in our buildings. There was recently a survey sent out to teachers at the completion of a Second Step unit in one of our buildings. There was a lot of positive feedback from the teachers, including the statement on the screen, which says that the lessons are a good source to refer back to when reminding students to be good listeners and what is expected for their learning, and students can recall what is taught in Second Step during classroom time. So we are always happy to hear the positive feedback from the teachers and that they are reinforcing it even when we are not in the classroom. Another example of data that we collect is checking in with students following a class lesson. So one example is that there was recently a lesson done in kindergarten on identifying anger. So we talked about how anger is okay and everybody feels that way. What does it feel like in our body, and how can we manage that feeling? So after the lesson, a group of kindergartners were individually asked if they could identify which student showed anger on their face of three fictitious students. So at the end, 24 out of 25 students were able to identify which student showed anger, and those students were also asked what they would do if they felt angry. And 20 out of 25 students were able to state at least one thing that they could do, such as take deep breaths or talk to their teacher, and the students that responded they didn't know what they would do were followed up with later. So these slides were just a very short sample of what the elementary school counseling program entails, but we were really happy to share that with you tonight. We're proud of the program that we have and look forward to seeing where the program goes in the next few years as we continue to adapt the program to best support our students and community.
Okay, I guess I'm up. Anna Bartlett, and I'm one of the school counselors at the middle school. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our program at the middle school level. The structure of the middle school causes the counseling program to look a little different than it would at the other levels. The team approach is, you know, how the middle school is structured, and as counselors, we are part of the team. It makes us kind of the gatekeepers of information in that we work with the team, but we also are what links it to the special area teachers and to the service providers and to parents. So it's very common for anyone in those groups to come to the counselor, you know, to say, "Is there anything I should know?" And we really make a big effort to communicate to everyone. We attend meetings weekly with the team and the house principal, and that's often where we can get information that needs to be given to the other populations in the school. We continue to do classroom lessons as they do at the elementary level at the developmentally appropriate topics. So these are skills that aren't directly academic but affect how students perform academically. So things such as grit and resilience, our looking into the future is a classroom lesson we do with eighth graders about career development. We often work with seventh graders on SMART goals, and also we do various lessons that relate to social skills. Also, at the middle school, we're fortunate that the school counseling curriculum is also covered in other areas. So we have our school counseling curriculum, but we also have our health and facts curriculum, and it's great because we really complement each other. For example, in facts, they do the career unit. It's the same year that we go in and do our look into the future. So we start with a broad perspective, and then they go to facts, and they're able to narrow it down, and then it culminates in job shadowing. So that, you know, is an example of how we complement each other. Some of the curriculum in health are things that we frequently talk to students about. So they will learn about it in health class, and that helps us because we help them apply those concepts then when they're working with us in groups or individually or within the classroom. Next slide. A big part of what we do is academic, I call it coaching. And that's, you know, we monitor kids' progress closely, but we meet with them and we're trying to teach them the skills they need to be able to improve their academic performance. So we model a lot with executive functioning skills. It's actual coaching, you know, encouraging and forming plans of what they can do, sending them out there to practice, and then following up with them to see, you know, how things went. So that is a big part of our job at the middle school. We also work closely with the house principal on attendance. There are times when a student who's having trouble attending school will have mental health issues or emotional issues, and that's frequently where we get involved in trying to work with the students and the parents to get them able to attend school more and to address any issues that might be getting in the way of them regularly attending school. Very involved in behavior intervention plans. And transition is big for us because we have kids transitioning in from fifth grade, and we have kids transitioning out into high school. So there's a big focus on both ends. For high school, we're right actually in the middle of our scheduling, so programming with students, and we've done a lot in the classroom and through technology and have provided a lot of resources. And that's, you know, at this time of the year, a big part of what we do. We did also, earlier in the year, survey all of our students on their social-emotional needs, and we were able to make sure everyone was connected in some way. So we took the results and reviewed them carefully and made connections with any kids who indicated that they wanted to talk to someone or that there was some type of social-emotional need. Also, as school counseling staff, we're very involved in school-wide activities. We have the unique perspective. We have the global perspective. We can see the big picture. And often, as we address issues, we will get together and develop activities. So Mix It Up Day, which is actually a national activity. We develop Club Mashup, in which at the beginning of the year, we give a, it's kind of a fair where the different clubs go and present information, and it's attended by grades 6 through 8, and they're, you know, they go there and they sign up for different clubs. We've also done College Day, where the staff all identified the colleges they attended and their majors and when they graduated, and they wear shirts and sweatshirts with their college, and then the information is posted, excuse me, is posted. And we're involved in other different activities, such as the GSA and Sources of Strength. Sorry about that.
Hi there. I'm Karen Murphy. I'm one of the six high school counselors. And so as in elementary and middle school, our focus is, it grows, it changes, and our focus is on academic success planning, and we really hope that all students are academically successful. We work very hard with everyone. You know, our focus in terms of the counseling department at the high school is the academic counseling piece, you know, with all students. So it's kind of funny when we meet with ninth graders and their families, you know, it's often that we're starting out the conversation talking about diploma and graduation. And I always say, "This is going to sound weird because you're only in ninth grade and you just kind of got here," but that's what we're all really working towards, are those earning, you know, earning those 22 graduation credits that's required by New York State. They're not just any credits. They're very specific credits in certain subject areas. So we, you know, talk about, you know, as we meet with students and families, you know, what they're working towards and why. So it's that ultimate high school diploma or that credential, depending on the path of the student. And we meet with students all year. I like to think, I call it seasons, like we have seasons of the year. We have seasons when we meet with, you know, different levels of students. So in the fall, we're very focused on our seniors, but we're also focused on our freshmen too because they're just starting high school, and we recognize they, you know, they need to get to know what the expectations are in the fall of high school and just getting their way around. But intensely, we're working with seniors because, you know, we are very, you know, closely working on college applications or employment, military, whatever the student wishes to do. And it just doesn't happen in the fall. It happens actually all year because things come up, and, you know, I always tell students, we all do, you know, you're entitled to change your mind, and if you do, you know, we're there to help you with that. We meet with juniors and their parents, winter, springtime. We do conferencing, and we do small group sessions with sophomores when we do program planning, and certainly the freshman introduction in the fall, and then we wrap it up later in the year with freshman parents and students as well. So we individually meet with each student to figure out what is their plan, and we have a written plan for all students. During the year, we are constantly in coordination. We're collaborating with administrators, teachers, social workers, all of these stakeholders. It's, it's the student's team, you know, whoever, those are the people that are tied to that student for that given year. And, you know, as things come up, we, we plan accordingly. And then when they, when students graduate and they leave, you know, we stay, obviously. And it's funny because, you know, sometimes our graduates will, will contact the high school and they'll say, oh, you're still here? Like as if, you know, they've graduated and we've graduated with them, but we don't, we stay. And, and we're, and we assist them beyond. So, and we're, we're happy to do that. So, so beyond high school, they still connect with us. We are still, you know, assisting them either in employment or in, in, you know, college transcripts and so forth.
Hi, everyone, I'm Ashley Kaplan. I'm also one of the high school counselors. Another big piece of the high school counseling program is the college and career readiness. So throughout the school year, we have several evening programs. We have a ninth grade introduction to the high school. So we talk about what the high school looks like, expectations, the role of the high school counselor and the program. In 10th grade, we introduce a college and career readiness program that we use called Naviance. And we also host a ready set college program with local community or local colleges that come in and do presentations with our students and families. In 11th grade, we also do a how to choose a college program. So things to look for when students are applying to college. And a college planning night that talks about the different two-year, four-year trade school options that students have after they leave us. In 12th grade, we do an instant admissions day. We do college application evening programs where we walk families through the process. We do how to write a college essay programs. And we also host college fairs. With COVID happening, we were able to move all of these to online platforms as opposed to our more traditional in-person setting. So we are still able to carry out these programs for our students. The Naviance program that I mentioned before, we do career interest inventories in that program. And the results save where they can share with their families after they've taken the surveys. And they can use the results to find potential careers. And also colleges that have the programs that each student might be interested in. And they can go back and redo the inventories if things change. We introduce it in 10th grade. And then we also use it again for seniors when they're applying to college to submit all of their materials. We do classroom lessons on careers in ninth and 10th grade. And then we also do pre-ACT and PSAT classroom presentations where we talk to 10th and 11th graders about the importance of standardized testing and practicing so that they can be set up for success.
So I know this is a very big presentation, so I, I'll move through this slide a little quicker because I know we've got other presenters on deck. But the social emotional support is always first and foremost in, 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 in the counselor's mind at the high school as well as on the minds of many other of our people who are on this presentation. So, you know, when we think about students, we, you know, we try to, you know, plan for them accordingly and, and find ways to support them as needs come up. And by that collaboration with teachers, administrators, social workers, all of the stakeholders that are involved. You know, we're, we're, we're doing that. And we, and we participate in a variety of team meetings to discuss and plan for students who do have crater, the greater needs. One of the things that we pride ourselves is that we're one of the consistent sources of support for students at the high school. You have your counselor that you meet in ninth grade and you have them all the way through senior year. And they're, you know, they're going to have different teachers along the way and they great, make great relationships with teachers, which is wonderful. They often go back and connect with those same people. But we're one of the, you know, we're one of the people that are with students and their families. And we have an alpha division too. And typically, not always, but we, we try and have the same family with the same counselor, you know, as, as they move through and as other siblings come up. So there are a number of programs at the high school with other groups that help with those supports for social emotional needs and wellbeing. And we also provided a survey, social emotional survey for all 10th graders, which we had responses. And, and we were, you know, we followed up with those students. So that, that was a, a great start to, to that this year.
And I'm Catherine Rochetti. I am one of the school social workers in the Gilderlin schools. I have been working for the Gilderlin schools for over 20 years. I spent about five years at Farnsworth Middle School. And I've spent the last of parts of my career at three of the five elementary schools. I will be representing the social workers kindergarten straight through graduation. So I'm going to do my best not to be redundant because especially at the elementary and the middle school level, the role of the social worker and the role of the school counselor have a great deal of overlap. So rather than repeating so much of what you heard, I'm going to quickly try to go through it. Like at the elementary level, the school social workers can also do school class lessons. Jen Riley showed me how to make Bitmoji classrooms. So since when we went virtual, I was able to use those for my families and for my students. I know that at the other levels, the social workers also work on attendance and absenteeism. They absolutely work with the school counseling department on all types of transitions, whether it be into kindergarten, straight up through high school. They also work on that sources of strength and, and all those larger clubs and, and support systems that are school-wide for our school community. And all those outreach programs like the Backpack for Success and the Food Backpack Program. So social workers are highly trained in psychology and they also do something called the Systems Approach. I'm going to talk about that in more depth at the next slide. So I can explain, no, no, keep on the slide we were on Lisa, I'm not ready for that one yet. Thank you. Social workers are licensed mental health professionals, which means that they could bill for services. So in the special ed world, if a child has social work services, counseling services on IEP, that service can be billed through, for, through the license of your social worker. They also work with the counseling departments for all kids in general ed. All right, I'm ready for that now, Lisa, thank you. So what makes the social worker unique? And why it's a good blend to have social work staff working with your school counseling staff? The thing that makes social workers unique is that we are one of the only professions, at least the only one that I know of, that works outside of the educational system in other systems. And then brings that expertise into education. So for me, as a licensed social worker, I had to have 2,000 hours of clinical supervision. That's six years of clinical supervision in agencies outside of the field of education. My supervision had to be done by either a psychiatrist who is a medical doctor, a clinical licensed psychologist, or a social worker who also had that six years of supervision and already had the ability to bill. So when you look at your Gilderlin social work department, they have worked in all of the systems. They have worked in the systems of addiction. They've worked for the Department of Social Services. They've spent time working in foster care. They've worked at domestic violence shelters. They have experience in family court. They've worked at probation. They've worked at hospice. They've worked for the Albany Police Juvenile Unit. They have experience in the correctional facilities. They have worked with gang kids. They've worked in residential treatment centers, which is when the family court places kids in outside school because they're not managing in the home well. They've worked with homeless families and with runaway and what we call throwaway children. They've worked in rape crisis. They worked at Wildwood School, which really gives that specialty for kids with autism. They've worked in psychiatric facilities, both inpatient and day treatment. Now inpatient is obvious, you're going to stay in that hospital. Day treatment is when someone first comes out of the hospital, but they need a higher level of care. So they spend six to eight hours a day working on the skills they need to function in the world. They've worked at county mental health systems. They've worked in emergency rooms doing psychiatric evaluations. Those are your homicide, suicide, safety evaluations. They've worked in the, on the system to help provide food for families. They've worked on forensic custody evaluations through family court. The forensic custody evaluation is when someone who's trying to keep custody of their child might have an addiction or a mental health component. And they get that more thorough evaluation. They've worked in private practice. Some of us are adjunct professors and we of course have worked in schools. I believe that this brings a real richness to our community. Because if someone might need something that they're not even aware that a social worker can get them. Like if there was a family with young children and they couldn't figure out how to find, they didn't have the fiscal need to get car seats. I could probably get them car seats in a day. If someone needed to figure out how to get a child into a summer camp, but they had an intense disability than a typical child. Your social worker would be the one that you would go to and say, do you have any links to how I can get this for this family? That gives them that systems specialty. Now, I'm just making sure I'm hitting all the notes from all the social workers who asked me to make sure I said something. They also do like help, they can help families if they want to apply for disability. If a family is about to get evicted and they're not sure, what do I do? I have young children, I don't want to be evicted. Your social worker would be the person that you'd ask. And they'd say, of course, there's emergency funding. Here's the phone number you call. They're going to give you a voucher, you can be in that hotel, just to help people get on their feet. Because they've worked in so many systems, they have that knowledge at their fingertips. Now in school, social workers, and this is the slide for that, thank you Lisa. Social workers do a lot of the same things that the school counselors do. I kind of divided as the social worker tends to be more of like your special ed teacher and your school counselor is kind of like your regular ed teacher. Most of the social workers in Gilderlin have, are on up to 40 to 50, they work with 40 to 50 children with either IEPs or 504s. So a bulk of their counseling is longer term. It's going to be all year, it might be for multiple years with a kid who is more of a need. Now again, there's a lot of overlap because the social workers also work with those general education students. But they're probably going to get referred to kids that a lot of the school counselors or the families say, we believe this child might need a little bit more. Now I may still work with that child for six or eight weeks and then say, yeah, they even need more than me and do that referral out. But they're really great for that kind of assessment. They do have a specialty in case management, again, just finding things, linking people to those outside resources. They also bring that expertise with that crisis intervention in terms of having those assessment skills. Like if you're going to do a safety assessment in school, and unfortunately, we sometimes have to do safety assessment in school, you want someone who has that training behind them, who's done multiple of them. So you would often go to your social worker for those kind of services. And of course, those referrals, not only to, hey, here's a counseling referral, but does a family happen to need more? So that's a very quick overview, hopefully including all the overlap of the two professions and then how they differentiate at all the levels. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Kirsten Idol Barkman. I'm one of the psychologists in the district and work at Gilderlin Elementary. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the psychologists and, and, you know, how our role is a little different. So, you know, psychologists are really highly trained in that overlap of psychology and education and how those intertwine. It involves extensive knowledge in the assessment of cognitive achievement, behavioral and social emotional development. And we specialize in analyzing complex learning, behavioral and social and emotional profiles to assist in the development of interventions. The thing with psychologists is we do have multiple levels of credentialing. We have multiple levels of education. We're required in this, in New York State, in the school system to have a minimum of 60 credit hours. So a certificate of advanced study. But many have a higher level than that. We have several doctoral level psychologists in the district, several licensed psychologists within the district. So that just create, gets that next level of, of mental health understanding. And then similar to what Catherine was saying, some of those billing opportunities. So on the next slide, I want to just talk about how school psychologists really wear a lot of different hats. So, and so as I was thinking about this presentation and how to represent psychologists across the district. So looking at our elementary, middle and high school psychologists, you see that we all wear many different hats within our, our positions. But we do have some fundamental similarities in what we do. So I kind of thought I'd start with kind of giving the, that broad similarity of what does a typical psychologist engage in? And then break it down a little bit at each level to represent what, what we do at those levels. So in terms of what school psychologists do, one of the primary responsibilities is completion of individual psychoeducational evaluations as well as the mandated reevaluations for students with IEPs and 504 plans. And this includes students in out of district placements as well as students in private schools such as St. Madeline Sophie in our catchment area. I'm going to talk a little more about psychoeds, psychoeducational evaluations, a little bit, in a little bit. But I just want to say that's kind of a, a big portion of where, you know, are, where we provide services within the schools. We're also mandated members of CSC meetings. So we attend all the initial meetings for students who need IEPs and 504 plans, as well as all of their annual reviews. We complete and while we facilitate the development of functional behavior assessments and the development of behavior intervention support plans. We provide behavioral supports when students are struggling in the classroom or, or are in crisis within the classroom. And we collaborate with teachers and school staff to help in the development of academic, social, emotional and behavioral interventions and how to progress monitor those interventions to see how students are progressing. And then lastly, we're, you know, all members of the crisis intervention teams within our buildings. So that's kind of a broad of what, what we do. But we're, we all have a little bit different roles in each building. So when you look at the elementary level, each elementary school has a full-time building-based psychologist. So we're responsible to do all of those activities that, that I just mentioned. But at the elementary level, we also organize and facilitate what's called our school-based support team. And that includes monitoring the implementation of interventions and following up on student progress. We also oversee the process for students with IEPs and 504 plans. So that involves, you know, communicating with teachers at this, at the beginning of the year, ensuring that our special area teachers are informed of, you know, those students in their classes who have five IEPs and 504 plans and what strategies they need to implement in the classroom for them. It means coordinating and scheduling all of the CSC and 504 meetings that have to occur throughout the year. And then at annual review time, when we're making plans for students for the following year, as needed, you know, chairing some of those meetings. At the elementary level, we also have a point four psychologist who supports more significant behavioral needs. So then at the middle school, you know, all those five elementary schools funnel into the middle school. So some of these responsibilities are divided a little bit more. So we have one psychologist at the middle school level who really serves as that CSC chair, who chairs those meetings and court, coordinates the 504 process. And then also leads our SBS, our school-based support team. And then the other psychologist is really responsible for carrying out the responsibilities that I talked about right at the beginning, which includes at this level, a significant number of reevaluations as all those students are, you know, funneling into the, into the building. And then also serving as a member of the school-based support team. And then as we move to the high school, it's divided out a little bit. And then as we move to the high school, it's divided out a little bit more. So, you know, I think Lisa mentioned this right at the start of the presentation that, you know, we have one psychologist really serves as the CSC chair and 504 coordinator. But she is able to, because of the number of evaluations, assist with completing those evaluations at the beginning of the school year and consult with parents and staff throughout the year. Then we also, we have that one physician who really primarily carries out those typical school psychologist responsibilities, but also co-leads a student support team and, and is available to run CSC or team meetings as needed. And then we have a point six position who supports that evaluation process and assessment responsibilities. And the other part of that individual's position is at the, at the preschool level. So carrying out the role of the CPSC chair, which involves, you know, coordination of the IEPs and services and chairing CPSC meetings for our preschool population and, and coordinating that with the county. So there's a couple of terms that I use that I just, you know, we often get questions about. So I just wanted to just clarify those. I know I'm talking really quickly because I know there's a lot to cover. But one of the things I wanted to make sure I covered is what is a psychoeducational evaluation? And we, you know, get asked that a lot. And really, a psychoeducational evaluation, it's a comprehensive assessment. And we do these assessments to help us understand what could be interfering with a student's learning. And so we look at multiple modalities of a student's functioning. We look at their cognitive abilities, their academic skills, their social emotional functioning, their behavioral development. And to, to help us understand, you know, what's interfering with a student's learning? Is it, is there possibility of a disability? Or are there other factors that the student might be dealing with? And that would be looking at, you know, what else could be going on? Are there, you know, is there trauma in their background? Are there things going on in their life that, that could be interfering? So it involves, it's a multi-step process that occurs, you know, over multiple, multiple days that involves, you know, just reviewing of records, gathering information, observing in the classroom. And depending on what, you know, the concern is, you might be doing multiple, multiple observations of that, that individual in the classroom. And then you're working with them individually to do assessments that are going to help understand what their, what their cognitive skills are, their academic skills, what their social emotional functioning is. And that will involve getting information from the parents, maybe rating skills. And then we have to put all of that together and try and interpret it and make sense of it and really help understand what's, what's going on with that individual so that we can then develop interventions and recommendations that will help them meet with further success in the school setting and beyond. And then, of course, we have to, if, if the student is a student who does qualify or need an IP or 504 plan, of course, we're going to include that information in that. And we're going to provide the staff and the parents with a comprehensive report of that assessment. So that the other term I used a lot was SBST, which stands for school-based support team. And really, I should have put this slide first before I talked about evaluations, because this really is the process before looking at doing a comprehensive evaluation. And it's really a team approach. We facilitate the team, but it really comprises our, our school counselors, our school social workers, but also other staff, including our language arts coordinators and our math teacher leaders. And we work together as a team to, with our classroom teachers to talk about students on a regular basis throughout the year to monitor their progress if they're on interventions that we develop. So, so we're talking about kids that were, that are at risk or that we're concerned about. And we're following their progress and we're coming up with interventions to support them in the classroom. And, you know, if we're seeing that they're not progressing or making progress, then that's where we would then, you know, look towards doing some more of those comprehensive evaluations.
Okay, so this is my favorite thing to talk about. I'm Catherine, I'll be again. And I'm going to share with you our facility dog program throughout the Gilderland schools. You know, I'm a social worker and I've told to you about systems. And one of my favorite things about the dog system, dog program, is that it has really become systemic. Dog program is now in every one of our schools. It started as a one-dog program when Dr. Idella was the superintendent and Martha Beck was my principal. And I presented to you lovely folks at the Board of Education. I think Barbara was there, I know Barbara was there. And it was a one-year pilot program. And we used the anecdotal records to look at its success and it kept going. And then when I worked in multiple schools, the principals and the teachers were asking for the dog when I wasn't there. They didn't necessarily want me back, but they definitely wanted the dog back. And with that, the dog program expanded. And right now, we have seven dogs working in our district. And hopefully, before I retire, we'll have a couple more, at the, two at the middle school and two at the high school. That would be my goal. And why do I call it a facility dog program? They are therapy dogs. All of our dogs need to pass a therapy dog test to work in our schools. But they do something that in the field of animal assisted interventions, we call targeted interventions. Animal assisted interventions is a real up and coming field. And we were lucky enough to step right into it when it was really young and brand new. The research on targeted interventions says that, I mean, I wouldn't, I'm going to go to the brain research first. The brain research in AI is really, really positive. One of the things it talks about is that when a child, or an adult, by the way, works with a dog, that they increase the oxytocin in their brain. Oxytocin is the brain chemical that makes you want to be social. When you talk about kids who are maybe socially withdrawn, kids with autism, kids who struggle with social skills, increasing that oxytocin increases their desire to be social. It actually also increases the dog's oxytocin, which makes the dog want to hang out with that child more. So it's a win-win. The brain research also talks about it lowering anxiety. Now, a targeted intervention is when a professional partners with a canine companion to support and achieve the goal of a student. So professionals throughout our school district are accessing our canine partners to achieve goals for our students. Those goals can be school-wide prevention, crisis work, or focusing specifically on social emotional goals. In the next slide, I'm going to introduce you to our seven dogs. And then I'm going to talk a little bit more extensively about how we use our dogs with targeted interventions with an educator helping a student. So these are our seven dogs. We haven't been able to have them together because of COVID. But in the upper left-hand corner, we have our two youngest dogs. The little brown dog's name is Gal, and she works at Westmere Elementary School. And the black dog next to her is Olive, and Olive works at Gilderland Elementary School. In the back row of our dogs, the brown one sitting, thank you for the pointer Lisa, that is Sina, and Sina works at Farnsworth Middle School. And next to Sina, the blonde dog in the back row, that is Doc. Doc works at the high school. If we go to the front row, again, all the way to the left, that is Lula. And Lula works at Altamont Elementary School. The blonde dog in the middle is Willow. Willow works at Pine Bush Elementary School. And all the way to the right is my little boy, that little beauty's name is Copeland. He's named after Missy Copeland, the ballerina. So what are the ways that a professional can access these dogs for targeted interventions? I'm going to tell you about the small and group work that I can do. And not yet, least thanks. And then the whole class and the crisis. And then, of course, we have that little video. So one little boy I worked with last year, IEP student, needed, had lots of goals. And he and I were, he trained my dog Copeland to turn on and off the lights in a classroom. Now, I didn't care if the lights went on and off because my goal was not for the dog to be successful in turning on the lights. My goal was for the student I was working with to learn how to read the body language of another living being. So I could transfer those skills to him reading the body language of people. I wanted him to learn calming skills, following complex directions. So he's working on this executive functioning skill, skills, being really patient with the dog when the dog didn't understand. Why? Because we were working on following directions. And sometimes that is hard. So if the dog's struggling with it and you're struggling with it, I'm building compassion. But I'm also teach, teaching directive, direction-following skills. We also worked on perseverance that he needed in academics because he was successfully able to teach my dog to turn on and off lights. And then we could take that little dog and pony show, or I should say, dog and child show on the road. And he was able to share it in classes with younger students and with his peer group. So we worked on his self-esteem, his confidence and his pride. And that's just one intervention where I could work on seven or eight different social emotional goals with my dog as my partner. We've also taught the dogs very structured fetch, where they had to learn how to run at a ball and not pick it up. Very hard to teach a dog to do that. But that I use to help students learn self-control. So if I throw that ball, but I don't give the dog permission to get it, he's not allowed to pick it up. And the child gets to pick it up. But sometimes we give the dog a turn. We're working on turn-taking. We're working on self-control. We're working on using movement, but still being able to stop yourself when you need to. And following, you know, all those social skills. Those are just two examples of the individual and the group work that you can use targeted interventions with a dog. For the whole class, for the whole school, you can do all kinds of character education and both intervention. Our dogs are at buses when the kids get off the buses and they're there to say goodbye. So that they do a lot of meet and greet, so it's a whole school program. We've done letter-writing programs with the dogs where there are mailboxes and any kid with a need can write the dog and the dog writes back. You're going to see some of the dog's letters in the two-minute video. Sina, our dog at the middle school, made posters to teach kids how to wear masks properly that were sent all over our district during COVID. Copeland has a little program where we could do Copeland's compliments on courage, where the kids can do something they're proud of and we hung that up on a bulletin board. At GES, our little dog Olive has a, has a positive challenge where the children will be challenged to do something socially positive. If they're caught doing that, they get a little dog paw stamp on their hand. Their name gets given to Alan Locke with the principal and it gets read on the announcements. At Gild, at Westmere Elementary School, Gal is writing books called The Westmere Way, teaching kids about safety, about respect, about mindfulness. And that list can go on and on because it's reading, it's writing, and it's the dog being part of that community. I use a lot of videos. I use an app called My Talking Pet where my dog can send out videos to the whole school on resiliency, on social skills, on academic perseverance. Copeland can also read about seven different words. He could read sit, paw, down, hop, bow, spin. And when children are struggling academically, I can bring the dog right in. We could talk about how hard it was for the dog to learn how to read, really show the kids, the reading teachers use it so that you can, and talk about academic perseverance in that way. This is just a smattering of the ways that you can use animal assisted interventions, very targeted interventions to help students. And one of the reasons that I say it's beyond a therapy dog program is because of those targeted interventions. The dogs also do a lot of-
Catherine, I'm, I know you've shared a lot of examples. We still have a lot of the presentation to go through. And I know you've shared and highlighted some great examples of our facility program. But I'm going to have to move us along because I know the board has a very long agenda ahead of them. And I want us to make sure we touch on really kind of-
You got it.
Things we're doing with our, this year. I don't think we'll have, unfortunately, have time for the video, but I can share it. Maybe we can put it on our website.
Can I add one other thing and then I'll stop? When, the dogs are used a lot for morning services. When we've lost students and staff, they come and they're a real comfort to our community at large. And hopefully you'll get to see that video, it's really fun.
Yes, it's cute and I will, I will share it with the board, thank you. Oh, no, it's going to start and I don't know how to stop it. We go to the next slide. Okay. The final tier of our continuum here in the district is our mental health clinic, which is in partnership with Northern Rivers, which is celebrating its two-year anniversary this month. It's hard to believe, but we have served many students from across the district. And this year especially, we've been able to really reach students through telehealth or teletherapy to make sure they're receiving their services and not have to transport them from an elementary school or high school to Farnsworth Middle School. We've had a really great relationship with the staff at Northern Rivers and are able to refer from our providers or families may refer directly to their clinic on New Connor Road and receive services in our building to reduce any barriers they may have to more therapeutic treatment outside of the school setting. So this past school year, as you know, has presented many challenges and impacted the work of our PPS providers. And I'd like them to kind of briefly highlight some of the work that they're doing, what they've seen this year.
So social distancing and keeping cohorts separate has created some obstacles for our students in making and maintaining friendships. Being separate from people that you know has been a challenge at all grade levels. More students are feeling isolated, especially those who are fully remote, not being able to interact with peers. A lot of our students at all grade levels learn from modeling and learn from their friends. So teachers, PPS providers, all of the adults can do a lot, but their own peers are also very strong educators for them. A lot of our high school students are home alone during the day. So there's a lack of supervision in some families that have to go out to work. It's hard on the remote days for those students to feel motivated when they don't have the social interaction. It's difficult to concentrate at home. Sometimes there's more distractions like television or gaming systems. COVID has also led to some more increasing security and fears of the unknown. So worrying about the future, worrying about the virus itself. There are some technology limitations, intermittent internet access. There's some trouble with students knowing how to navigate the technology. That's been a huge learning curve for time. Cameras not working, Chromebooks can be slow or get damaged sometimes. The impact of the varied start times across the district has been a challenge for sure. The later start time excitement at the beginning of the year and being able to sleep in has slowly worn off because students are getting done with school at the high school after 4:30 and still going to activities, to their jobs, they have family obligations. So our families are telling us that they're not really getting more sleep. They've just changed their sleep patterns because they're up until 2:00 or 3:00 AM doing homework. And it's hard with our students at the high school being fully remote because it's difficult to, at 4:20, when your school day is over, to separate that school-life balance. Many teachers are teaching the students in their bedrooms and it's hard to differentiate, this is my bedroom versus my classroom.
So I think we all have one big takeaway from the school year is we've realized how important in-person learning is and how important being in front of our teachers, being with students, being with their peers, just being able to connect is, is huge. So I don't know that we're going to hear too many complaints hopefully next year, school year, when we're all back to what we hope is relative normalcy. One of the things that at the high school level, we, you know, we, we're, we have a wonderful group of counselors and we're very blessed to lean on each other when we each other have, need some support on occasion. But, but last year, we had seven counselors. This year, we have six, so we had the loss of one position. This year we have six, so we had the loss of one position. And we had the addition this year of the, of the eighth grade because of the spacing issues and trying to keep students in a, you know, safe environment, given all of the restrictions with COVID and so forth. So that has added an additional hundred students to our caseload. So last year we were in the 220s and this year we're in, we're in the 320s. So, uh, so we're trying to meet the needs of everyone, but you know, when you have more students, you have less people to go around to. So, you know, we, we recognize and we, we work really hard to address what we can as, as things come to us. One of the things that, um, you know, we recognize very clearly is students have, are really struggling with those executive functioning skills. They just, um, either they're not fully developed because, uh, given their age and their level of development. So it's a big ask for kids to be home, get on, you know, get, get on class at, at the start of the class and then end and, you know, go from one activity to the next. I know that's what we've had to ask them to do because that's just what we've all had to do, given, you know, all of the, the, the challenges that we've had this year. But that's where we're seeing kids really struggle with navigating those life and social skills. And, you know, and, and trying to figure out ways, how do you get students, you know, to be more successful? Given, just given the structure that we have right now, it, it's, that's a huge challenge.
Okay. So, um, you know, along with the many challenges that we have certainly had this year, we've been able to recognize some unexpected benefits. So at the elementary level, we've been lucky enough to remain in person more consistently than any other level. So this has, um, you know, provided our youngest learners with the opportunity to continue developing social skills and interacting with their peers. So we're all really thankful and lucky to have had that. Also at the elementary level, we've realized that reducing the amount of time spent on transitioning students throughout the building to different classrooms has led to more time being devoted to direct instruction, which has had a positive academic impact. Many of us, both educators and students, have been forced to become more proficient with technology. This is allowed for our ability to move seamlessly from in-person to remote instruction when needed, which has been really invaluable to all of us this year and will no doubt be helpful in the future as well. Students and adults as well are learning to handle disappointment and adjust expectations to fit our reality. We're seeing flexibility, empathy and perseverance from our entire school community. So, um, we've also seen a decrease in behavioral referrals across the board. This can be attributed to the fact that social distancing has required us to offer smaller class sizes and has reduced transition times. Meals have been provided free of charge by the district to all students. This has reduced barriers for families when it comes to applying for and receiving assistance in this area. And lastly, our ability to facilitate virtual meetings has made it more convenient for working parents to be involved. Parents aren't required to take as much time off of work to attend in-person meetings and can connect with us from virtually anywhere. So even though we can all agree, this has been an extremely challenging year, we can hopefully move forward with the knowledge that we've gained as a result. I know I, for one, and I'm sure all of my colleagues here are so grateful for everyone, our, our faculty, our students, our families, administration, staff, who have all, you know, come together to support one another in our combined goal of providing a safe and positive learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. I promise we're wrapping up here. Thank you for your attention. As we're preparing for the start of this unusual school year, the district had developed many committees to prepare for reentry and one of them was the Social Emotional Learning Advisory Committee. And our focus of the committee was on building relationships, routines and resilience that key characteristic we all need to face the challenges we have encountered this year. And the committee was comprised of 20 stakeholders, which included parents, school and building, school building and district leaders, community-based service providers, as well as many of the team here presenting and other psychologists, counselors and social workers. We wanted to make sure our staff and families had resources for self-care and mental wellness, providing resources to how to prepare for coming to school, social distancing, mask wearing. We created a series of professional development webinars focusing on building relationships, resilience, what we would do to prepare students for, and how students' learning may be altered for this school year and how we can really focus on the social emotional needs throughout learning and focus on building those relationships and support the transition back to school. And also looking at our counseling plan and other interventions for support is embedded in this process. And we would like to continue with this group. I'm sure we'll continue to need this group as the, as the months and we prepare, go on and we prepare for next school year.
So in terms of some of our recommendations from that committee, you know, we are looking at some things, you know, social emotional curriculum that we can implement kindergarten through 12th grade. One specifically is positivity project that we've been looking at. As Lisa said, we want to continue to meet as a social emotional advisory committee to, you know, come up with ideas. And I think, you know, um, really what's important and I think that we keep in mind is that, you know, we're, we're all still in the midst of this crisis. This pandemic is, is a crisis. So we're all still in the midst of this. We're all going through it together as a community and we'll, we all come to this crisis differently. We experience it differently and we cope with it differently. And so I think we need to recognize that as we move forward. The other piece is that learning has been different. I think we've done a remarkable job as a school community, coming together and being flexible and being creative and how we're meeting the needs of our learners. But there's been challenges and learning's been interrupted. There's been decreased opportunities for social connectedness and access to those extracurricular activities, which I know is going to come up at some point tonight. But, but not just athletics, arts, music, all of the different clubs that, that kids are able to engage in. All, all of that has been different and impacts our social interaction skills and, and our feelings of that social connectedness. So as we move forward, we really need to think about all of these things. We need to think about how we, um, you know, how we deal with the, um, with our own feelings of, of this pandemic and the crisis and understanding that we all do it differently, but also understand that we need to adjust our expectations as we move forward. As, and as we come back to hopefully a more typical type of learning. So our work isn't done, which leads us to our next and, you know, last thoughts.
Yeah, this is our post-COVID planning. So as a department, the school counselors, the school psychologist and the social worker is really going to have their work cut out for them. And we hope to do a lot of summer work to help create some plans so that we can help kids acclimate and readjust to the, going back to in-person school, do some really, some homework and some looking at those, those academic slides, how to plan to get the kids back in and adjusted and how to also help our teachers with what they can expect. Thank you.
Thank you, team. I appreciate your time and thank you to our Board of Education and our district office team for your time and attention tonight. If there's time and you have questions, we're happy to answer them or if you'd like to forward them on later. We understand that too.
I have a question. Can you guys hear me? Okay. I, I thank you first for the presentation. That was a lot of information. So I apologize if I missed this because there was a lot. I, I think we've heard a lot from the students and parents about their emotional well-being, particularly at the high school level. And I know you guys talked a little bit about working with an advisory committee. I'm just wondering like what's happening in the moment, working with like administrators and faculty? Because we just hear so much, so often from students that they're overwhelmed with work, they're stressed. I mean, it's like every week we get messages about their mental health. So I was just wondering, you know, in the moment, what's happening with that?
Do one of our high school counselors want to jump in? I know we have multiple layers of support that we offer and it could be just an opportunity to meet with their school counselor or have a, meet with their teacher or contact their assistant principal who can, and help and navigate some of those challenges.
Yeah, it's coordinating with multiple faculty. Like Lisa was saying, we're regularly scheduling parent, teacher, student conferences and looking at, um, you know, the level of work that each student has and, and, you know, and sometimes it may be making some adjustments, given the students' needs and so forth. So, you know, we try to, we try to individualize, you know, whatever the, the issue is for that particular student, we try to make an individualized plan for them, you know, to figure out how to best support them. Certainly counselors, social workers, psychologists, we're meeting with students. You know, oftentimes virtually, if they're in person, we're meeting with them and, and we do short-term type counseling. And then, you know, given the nature of, of, of their concern or their issue, like we've heard before, you know, we connect with the, the social workers. Sometimes we're, you know, thinking about and, and talking to parents about, you know, if there's a need for outside, you know, continued therapy or counseling, if there's a greater need. So, um, yeah, it, I would say that's probably our biggest struggle is trying to figure out, you know, how to best support students with the nature of, of getting through high school and all of the demands of high school, because it is a demanding program here at the high school. Ashley, I didn't know if you had something else you wanted to share.
I was going to echo what you said and just add that losing that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday after-school time has made things very, very difficult for our students. And opening up that nine oh five to nine thirty or ten, depending on the in-person or remote day, has been an option. But it's very difficult considering that that's when students are getting ready to walk out the door, get on the bus and catch their ride. So it's a great idea in theory, but it's definitely not a solution in terms of being the same as that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, already being in the building and physically getting to see the teacher.
I guess not, not even just like at individual level is, I know you talked about the positivity project, which I don't know what that's about. And I apologize if you, if we talked about it before and I forgot, just like, like at a programming level, like, you know, all of the students at once, because I know there always be students that will, you know, need counseling and individual help, but just, um, is there anything different this year because of COVID?
Well, we just, um, actually our building principal just put together incorporating remedial time within the class period time at the high school level. So teachers are going to have a portion of the class time where they're able to work with, with, with students, you know, academically speaking. So, you know, that, that's, I think that's going to be rolled out after the, after our winter break. And, um, you know, we're, we're seeing that, you know, there is a great academic need and which leads to other symptoms of, you know, like, kind of like what we were talking about, you know, which kind of piles on all of the stuff that we're, we're trying to get kids greater support with.
I just wanted, you know, we are trying as much as possible to try and get into the classroom and do group things. The scheduling of it is very challenging because at a sixth grade, each team is split into four now instead of two. So having to hit everyone and do them virtually. So a lot of it ends up being individual because it's so difficult to consistently get in the classroom. But we're trying our best, you know, to be able to do that and use all the tools available to us.
And systemically, the high school, middle school use sources of strength as a program within the high school to talk about and discuss the necessary skills and mindsets to be flexible and resilient and persevere through our challenges. The Positivity Project is a K-12 curriculum that would be instant, like videos for teachers to share daily and implement in their own classroom. And that requires, you know, systems level approach to purchasing and training and delivering. So that's, that's something we, it's a recommendation we have for future programming, but would need a systemic level approach to getting that out across the board.
I think as the years gone on as well, teachers are learning that they can't give students the normal amount of workload. So they've been working on trying to reduce how much, because for one student, something might take 20 minutes and it might take another student an hour and a half because they don't have that support of the teacher in the physical classroom on their remote days. So they're working on kind of toning down how much work students have outside of the class time in terms of reducing the overall amount of homework that students are getting.
I think one of the hardest things that has hit all of us and our families and students and professionals is modifying your expectations. I mean, we cannot move through the curriculum at the pace that we moved through previous to this. We cannot expect students to learn at the same rate that they learned prior to this pandemic and our interrupted learning and our change in our educational delivery of system. So we really, I think one of the big ways to take the stressors off, and it's hard for many of us to say, to modify our expectations and, and sometimes we just have to be good enough and we can't be perfect at everything because the more pressure we put on ourselves as students, as parents, as teachers and administrators, board members, you know, the harder it is to live up to those expectations. So I think that's been the piece that we've struggled in trying to help our teachers and students and parents realize is that we have to modify our expectations this year. We, we know that we can't do the same things we did previously. We're still in the middle of a pandemic. I feel it's been closing in more so since the holidays, just in my own, you know, world and who it's, who is, it's impacting and the trauma that families are experiencing from members who may have, have died or from the, from the virus. So we're still, we're still in it and it's a, it's a marathon. And I think we're still going to be seeing the impact of this even into next school year. So that's why it's important that we can start preparing now and what can we do to get ready for that fall of 2021?
Thank you. Barb, do you have your hand raised or is that from before?
No, I do. You mentioned a social emotional survey that you did. Would it be possible to get a copy of that survey and maybe a synopsis of the results? I think the last survey that I recall doing was way back when we instituted the bullying program. And we did some testing on bullying and other, you know, things that, that bother kids. And it's been a long, long time since we did that. That was a very comprehensive survey. But if you could provide, you know, a copy of the survey, the, like, the questions that were asked and then just a synopsis of what you found this many years later, so that we could take a look at, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, the survey was really looking at students, you know, kind of doing a check-in on, do you realize, you know, do you know, do you have a trusted adult that you could reach out to? Who are those trusted adults? Do you, do you know that there are people that you can talk to? And I can certainly, we piloted across three grade levels initially, just kind of see how it could roll out. And as the team mentioned, students, they were able to target some students who weren't willing, you know, were able to say in that survey that they needed assistance and may not have publicly done so. So they could reach out and ensure, um, they have a trusted adult. And I, one of the main protective factors for students who experience trauma is having one trusted adult. It could be a teacher, a coach, a monitor, a teaching assistant, an administrator, a counselor. That one trusted adult is the biggest protective factor to surviving and getting through and persevering through a trauma. So we wanted to reach out to those students and make sure that they had someone they could reach out to and they could identify who that person was. But certainly I can share the survey with you and, and kind of get some data from our teams to see how it rolled out. But certainly I can share the survey with you and, and kind of get some data from our teams to see how it rolled out.
It's interesting because at a former board meeting, just two or three meetings ago, there was this discussion of how do we find out if there is a trusted adult in each of our students? And in a lot of the workshops and things that I've gone to, just as you reflected, that is probably the most important thing that you can do, you know, for your students, to be sure that they have a bus driver, a custodian, a teacher, an administrator, someone that they can go to and feel comfortable with. So if we can expand that, that survey a little bit further, I don't know, you know, how one would do it. But the board has this, you know, discussed this earlier this season. So kudos to at least doing part of the population.
Well, that was one of our social, emotional learning advisory committees recommendations is we really needed at the beginning of the year to really promote those positive relationships with students as they return to school. And that's what's most important is the relationships first.
All right, thank you.
There another hand raised for a question?
I had a question. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's to Ms. Kaplan or Ms. Murphy. When you were discussing, I think it was Ms. Murphy, how you discuss plans with students for college, you also mentioned that you'll discuss employment for students who want to pursue employment afterwards. I was just wondering if you ever discuss options within the New York State workforce, for example? I'm just wondering what sorts of opportunities you discuss when it comes to employment?
Well, we do, we do have some students who seek employment right after high school. And it's a small percentage, but it's still a percentage. So we, we try and, you know, see what their sources of employment are. Sometimes it's a current job that they already have and they want to maintain that level of employment or expand on it as they move on from high school. The vast majority of our students are leaving high school to be trained in, in, in something. And it's typically at the four-year college level or the two-year college level. So, and, and if it's not at the two or the four-year college level, it's at some level of, you know, training like in cosmetology or a welding school or something to that effect, so that it leads to direct employment thereafter. So I think for the most part, students recognize that they really need some additional type of training after high school to, you know, to be successfully employed. We, we haven't done a lot with, you know, with employment, but certainly we're, we'll, we're open to, you know, expanding on that as, as those needs come along and, and provide resources for students in the event that, you know, that they, they wish to go in that direction.
In my experience, my students who have gone directly into the workforce, some have gone to work for the state or are planning to go to work for the state or elsewhere, have had somebody in the community that they've had a connection with, whether it be a family member or a family friend that's helped them get that entry-level position, even if they know it's only temporary while they figure out what they want to do next.
We've also have a school-to-work program here at the high school that connects students to partnerships of the area businesses. And some of our students have been able to obtain an employment after, after graduation. And are, I believe there's, you know, some of our classes offer internship opportunities outside. Prior to the pandemic, this year it's been a little challenging to have students go out and about and intern in other capacities. Our career exploration internship program, as well as our school-to-work program, does provide students with opportunities to, to observe and intern and, and work and get some job experiences.
Thank you. One of the reasons I brought it up is I'm not, in no way saying that employment is better or I'm not adding, attributing value to it. But for those students who are interested, the New York State workforce, joining it early with your diploma, does have some advantages, including helping fund education or training later, such as in welding. So I just wanted to put that out there, that there's a lot of great state resources. And for people who are not ready to go right to college or can't afford to do it or don't know what they want to do, they really can be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's very helpful.
Are there any more questions for Lisa and her team? Well, let's just thank them all very much for a very thorough program and lots of really important information for all of us to know and a lot of enthusiasm for the work, which is so important. So thank you all for being with us tonight. Well, well done.
Thank you for your attention. Have a good night.
Good night. So moving on in our agenda, we have the consent items next, which include the minutes from the January 26, 2021 meeting, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action and the financials. And we have, oh, and we have to remove letter I in personnel, the high-risk sports, and move them down to board president action because we need to vote before we appoint those positions. So can I have a motion to approve those consent items?
Oh, moved.
Barbara, second, Judy, any questions? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero. And next we have information items, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Singleton?
Thanks very much. I have a couple of good news items from our arts and music departments respectively. We had two students, GHS students from Becca Fleece's art classes, who have earned awards in this year's prestigious Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And we want to extend congratulations to Carrie Yamaguchi of grade 12. She submitted her art portfolio, which was titled "Human Greed and Selfishness Versus the Mind and Nature." And she very deservingly won an honorable mention. So I've attached the photos from Carrie's great portfolio for your viewing pleasure. We also had Renee Manzella of grade 10, and her submission was focused on drawing and illustration. And her, the image of her, excuse me, her drawing titled "Cool Kicks" is also included for you. And Renee won a Silver Key recognition. So congratulations to both of them. Job well done. And from our music department, we also had some, some good news come through. So our high school is proud to announce that Morgan Dempsey, who is a senior, has been invited to participate in the National Association for Music Education 2021. All Eastern Honors Ensemble is a member of the mixed chorus. The honor ensembles consist of a band, band orchestra chorus and jazz ensemble composed of more than 719 high school students who are selected from the Eastern Division of the United States. And that stretches from Maine to the District of Columbia. Selections to this prestigious ensemble is a highly competitive endeavor. Students are carefully selected from the eastern states. All-state participants and inclusion in these ensembles is quite an accomplishment. This year, students will participate in a virtual experience that will include keynote speakers, master classes with professional musicians and rehearsals with their conductors. Students will individually record their performance from home, led by a virtual performance of their conductor. And the recordings will be edited together to produce a virtual ensemble for the concert performance. So again, we want to extend congratulations to Morgan Dempsey, her family, the music teachers for this acknowledgement of the years of dedication and hard work, which resulted in this outstanding recognition. Great job, Morgan.
Thank you, Damian. Next we have school business information. Neil?
Thank you, Seema. One item this evening, it's some information about radon testing at the high school. Short-term radon screening was conducted at the high school from January 11th through January 15th. Out of a total of 282 tests, 14 were at or above the EPA's recommended threshold of four picocaries per liter. The 14 tests exceeding the action threshold were attributed to the following areas: auditorium, east gym and wrestling area, media center and music office. Although the district has conducted radon testing in past years, this screening is the first in a new continuous rotational testing cycle the district is implementing. The high school is being tested this year. The five elementary schools will be tested next year. And then the middle school will be tested the following year. That cycle will then repeat in subsequent years. The district will be working with our industrial hygienist, architectural firm and construction management firm to review the findings and develop an action plan to address those areas exceeding the recommended action threshold.
Neil, I just have one question. You said that there's a continuous cycle now of testing. Is there a reason, is there more radon? Or is, you know, I know that you get it from soil or water. I don't know if there's like an issue with radon that we have to be testing continuously?
There is no requirement to test. We're doing that because we feel it's important and should be done. Soil conditions are more prevalent toward radon in some parts of our district than others, particularly around the high school and Altamont, for example. It's just the soil condition more clay-based than sand, which is Gilderland and pine bush. But we feel it's important to do the testing at all school levels. So the idea is that although primarily our focus up to this point has been on the high school, we want to make sure we're not missing any other schools. And we think it's good practice to go ahead and do that, that testing in a rotation at other schools and have that information available to us if we need to make corrections.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Neil. Next, we'll move on to superintendent information. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you, Seema. Two items this evening. The first one is to let you know about an event that's going to be sponsored by the Gilderland Chamber of Commerce. Commerce, they're hosting a state-of-the-town forum, a virtual state-of-the-town forum on Tuesday, March 2nd. It's going to be from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning. They've invited me to be one of the speakers and I'm always honored to have that opportunity to speak with our community and share with them our, our challenges and our triumphs and everything in between. If you are interested in having, in being registered to attend, if you can let me or Linda Livingston or Deb Sim know, there is a registration process and we'll be happy to take care of that for you. If there's no questions, my second item is to give you a little snapshot of the three thought exchanges that we did. And I'm going to try to quickly share my screen so I can just give you a taste of some of these. And I, I promise I will be brief. But what you're looking at right now, I think, is a couple of slides that outline the three thought exchanges that we launched right after our January 13 panel presentation and closed on the 29th. And so we asked our faculty and staff, our students and our community, some variation of the question that you see before you. And that is, given the uncertain landscape for next school year, what advice would you offer the district as we develop our budget? And from our faculty and staff, just a couple stats, we had 265 participants, 149 thoughts, 67 and change ratings. And I'm not going to go through this exchange, but I do have the word cloud for you. And you can see some of the words that jump up here as words that show up many, many times in the exchange. But you see smaller class sizes, you hear, you see the word mental in there. Mental health is a big topic for all the groups that we participate, had participate in this exchange. Interest in retirement incentives, you see small class sizes and so on. The, well, let me show the next and then I'll talk a little bit more about the bigger plan here. This is the question we ask to our students. And again, what would they like us to consider as we're thinking about next year? We had a tremendous amount of participation in this exchange. 1,020 participants, 1324 thoughts, over 60,000 ratings. And here's the, the word cloud. And this really, I think, captures in one image, some of the things you heard are social, emotional professionals talk about in the presentation tonight. There's concern about mental health, the demands of homework, the demands of technology, the need to have breaks to connect with friends. So the students really can tell their story very eloquently about this. And then the third one, which I'm going to spend a little bit more time, just walking through a little bit, is the exchange that we shared, asked our parents and community to participate in. And again, this was what advice do you offer? We had good participation here, 541 participants, 328 thoughts, 15, almost 16,000 ratings. And you can see here in the word cloud, small class sizes came up a lot. Mental health was a big topic within that. Maintaining programs was very, very important. So what I'm going to do for just a second is bring you to the report itself. And all three of these exchanges has a full report, like I'm about to show you on this one. And we have posted it to our website. So our community can really work their way through this report in some detail. So this is the family one and I'll just show a little bit about how you can work through this. So again, here's the statistics that I just shared with you. We had asked participants to give us a little more information about what grade levels their child or children are in. And we asked them what attendance zone they live in. We also gave them the option to say they don't want to say. But each of the reports has two ways to look at the thoughts. And I'm just going to click on the top thoughts piece and point out a couple of things.
Marie?
Yep?
We can't see that. I think you have to switch to a different tab or present a different tab.
All right, let me try. How about that? Did it work?
Yeah, that seems to work.
Okay, sorry about that. My link didn't work, so let me scroll down. That's what I just talked about, to the top thoughts. And can you see this now?
Is that really scrolling?
It's on, yeah, it's on top thoughts, just the summary, it's top line there, family and community.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just stop sharing and tell you about it because I'm really mindful of our, of our time right now. But each of these reports has all of the top thoughts. You can go through them top to bottom. You can also look at them in terms of their themes. You can filter them by the grade level of the respondents. You can filter them by the attendance zone where people live. There's just a lot of information there. So all of those are at the website. I know all of you have had access to these for a few days. So why don't I stop talking, let you have any, ask me any questions you might have? And then I can share kind of what we're thinking about with next steps because this is all related to budget development. So I'll stop talking and take questions. Seema and then Barbara?
I don't want to take up too much time. I wrote a bunch of things. But I guess some of the ideas that were brought up there were pretty interesting. And I was wondering, like, if you're going to consider, you know, the, going forward with the budget. Like, for example, I, I think several in the teachers and staff mentioned the teacher leader model instead of instructional administrators. And I just thought that was fantastic. I don't know, I know you probably have already seen this, but I, I didn't know if that's something being considered. I just feel like this year is so crazy that, that, you know, maybe something crazy could be considered. I know people aren't happy with change, but I think we can look at that.
Well, we have, and Damian can jump in here. In the last couple of years, we have brought back our teacher leader positions and even added some areas. Like we saw Catherine Rochetti. and even added some areas like we saw Catherine Rochetti tonight, our social worker who is a teacher leader coordinating our facility dog program. Because we do recognize the value of that leadership at the teacher level for sure.
I mean, like, if we do, but do teacher leaders, they don't do observations, right, for other?
No.
Yeah.
And so right now, it's instructional administrators that do that.
And principals.
Principals.
And principals.
Assistant principals. I mean, it's a pretty all hands on deck to.
Right.
The demands of the observations.
But has there, I don't know, been consideration of the structuring of administration, like particularly the high school? And how, you know, like, for example, like, you know, I know Amy left, so that assistant principal position is, we're not feeling that. And obviously, you know, knock on wood, we're okay. But I'm just wondering, you know, what other structural changes, you know, can we make to save some money? Because I know a lot of people put, the TAs are central. I know even before COVID, people always talk about saving TAs. And so, you know, I'd rather save money there where we, they have impact on kids directly versus, you know, another administrator position that maybe can be filtered out.
Well, we definitely have been having conversations about what the high school structure would look like after Mrs. Dr. Heralcheck left. And what priorities do we have? What other things do we need to accomplish? So we don't have a plan to share tonight, but we are thinking about, as we always do when there is an open position, what's the best way to serve our school community going forward?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, I saw Barbara's hand up, so I was.
I just have one more quick question then. So the retirement deadline already passed, right? That was the beginning of February?
Yes.
So that can't be extended, right? That's done.
Um.
I know there was a big list of people who were retiring. I just didn't know if there was, you know, talk of extending that to offer incentives. Obviously, it have some savings.
Well, the incentive piece has come up in all of our exchanges. And I guess, Neil, I'm going to put you on the spot yet again to talk about it. We, we've discussed them a number of times. So our existing contract actually does have a retirement incentive in it, which is to indicate that if you're going to retire, you have to let us know by February first. And then it comes with a certain level of benefit. And we do that exactly because we're in budget development season. So we need to know kind of where we stand. I, I think the incentives that might be referred to in the thought exchange and elsewhere are different from that, like the state offered incentives. So Neil, I'll hand that to you if you don't mind.
Yeah, and Dr. Wiles said exactly right. We do have a notification incentive that allows us to capture those, what we call salary breakage. So if somebody is retiring, the premises will be able to replace that person with some, somebody closer to the entry level on the salary schedule. And there will be some salary savings, and we would need to know that in order to capture it as part of the budget process. So with that, we know we have a certain amount of savings that we can apply during the budget process that helps us make those informative decisions about if we need to make reductions or not, or where are there potential offsets to increasing expenditures, or how much fund balance might we need to use in order to cover a shortfall. So those are all pieces of information that are important to us in terms of knowing if we do have a certain amount of salary breakage that we can count on. And that makes the decision-making process much different in the budget development process. In terms of other incentives, primarily that would be the state offering an incentive. They've done that very rarely. I know it was talked about a little bit at the start of the pandemic again, but it hasn't gone anywhere as far as I know. And it really, in the past, has, has been offered to school districts occasionally. There's a cost to doing so. And the last time around, it was a very expensive option. So I, I don't recall any school districts that actually took advantage of that because of the cost that was incurred by the school district for the retirees. Certainly, if something were offered, it would be something that we could evaluate and look at. But right now, I'm not aware of any conversation that's occurring around an offering that would apply to, that would have to apply to school district employees, not just state employees. I have, I'm not aware of any of those conversations occurring right now at the state level.
Thank you.
Barbara?
One of the questions that I had, and I think one of the high school counselors sort of referred to it a little bit. When we looked at the student thought exchange, there was an outcry about the amount of homework that they were getting and the lack of time where they could actually get help with their teachers. And it looks like there is a remediation plan that's going to go into effect after the break.
That's right. I think I, I mentioned to the board, maybe last time we were together, that we had, we brought together our instructional subcommittee for reopening a few Fridays ago to help address the problem of students struggling this year with the workload, with their academic performance, with stress. And, and, you know, honestly, our faculty and staff have shared similar kinds of stress and anxiety over how the year is going because it's intense. There's just no two ways about it. And that committee came up with some ideas of how to find time for students and teachers to connect for extra help. And there were a couple of ideas, actually a few ideas that were shared, including, you know, creating a number of asynchronous remote days over the second semester, four of them, that would be focused on students meeting with teachers to get extra help. But one of the ideas that came up in the committee was to create time within the school day to make up for the lack of the activity period at the end of the day. And to make a very long story short, that included a lot of discussion and some surveys, what the high schools decided to do is to restructure the block. So to build into each seventy-six minute block, a period of time when new instruction is kind of halted, and teachers then have time to work one-on-one or with small groups of students on areas where they might be struggling while the rest of the class works on homework or continues, you know, other more independent work. And we'll be rolling that out right after the February break. It's a way to compensate for not having activity period, but also a way to try to take the foot off the gas pedal in terms of the, the rush to have students have, you know, access to all that content. And it gives teachers lots of autonomy on how to use their block and still provide students with extra help. So we'll report on how it goes. I know Mike Piscatelli and his team have been working hard to make that happen.
Well, I, I just can't imagine the, the poor child that's there for eighty minutes and then has to go on to another class for eighty minutes and sit in front of a computer. So I think this is a much better way of, you know, dealing with the situation. Thank you.
Sure. So here is the idea. And Gloria, you can chime in here as Chair of this, of the Communications Subcommittee. We, we talked at that committee about what to do with all this data in order to gather input from the board about your priorities for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget development process. And the idea that we had was to create a thought exchange for all of you in which we would ask you, so what is your priorities for twenty-one, twenty-two? After having reviewed the student, the staff, and the community one, what are your priorities? And then obviously, you would see each other's thoughts and rate them. And that would create a prioritized list for the district office to work with as we sort through, you know, all the decision points that we're going to need to make. Did I say that right, Gloria? Is this, I see smiles. Shall I put together an exchange and get it out?
Yes.
All right.
I think we always, we always struggle with this every year. You know, we've had charts and we've had, you know, hours and hours of talk. But if we come in and we get a lot of data together first, that would give us at least a base for discussion. And we can see right out there how, you know, most of us or all of us or whatever of us are feeling and, and be able, and be able to build off each other's ideas, too. So when you're rating, you can see other people's ideas, and it might be something I didn't think of. And I might say, gee, I do value that, and I might rate that high. So it'll give us a chance to, to build off each other and yet come out with some sort of a group priorities list that we can look at.
So look for that shortly.
Yeah, do we have a date that we wanted to get, what, I leave two weeks or something? I forget what the date was. We were going to try to get it back by, we'll have to check.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but we'll get it out this week at the latest in the Friday update.
Yeah, okay.
So are we going to try and talk about those priorities at the next board meeting? Or it just depends on when that comes out? Because I know the timeline this year of everything with the budget is.
We said that in, in our committee meeting, we said they determined board members should see a similar demo on the fourth and get all the reports on Friday, which we did get. We didn't put a date, except that we discuss it tonight and see how much time we thought we needed. Maybe, maybe the next board meeting will be enough. We'll have to just think about that for.
I think we should plan on the discussion for the next board meeting because.
There's something, something to look at.
Yeah. Okay. And that is all I have for my report.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Wiles. Moving on. New action items, School Business Management. I'll turn it back to Neil.
Thank you, Sierra, Seema, excuse me. First item this evening is a resolution to authorize school bus and vehicle bond proposition for the May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one school budget vote and election. This would authorize the district to spend up to one million thirty-three thousand two hundred dollars for the purchase of eight sixty-six passenger buses and one delivery slash courier vehicle. A roll call vote is required for this proposition.
So. Have a second, Gloria? All in favor, oh, Linda, you have to do roll call for this?
Okay, you ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Alonzi?
Yes.
He said yes.
Yes. Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Together?
Yes.
Mrs. Person?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Did you hear me?
Yeah. My connection is bad, I'm sorry. Mrs.
Yes, that's me, I couldn't hear you.
Mrs. Tollhill?
Yes.
All right, I think I got you all, thank you. I didn't vote, yes.
I don't vote either. I didn't hear my name, but yes.
Thank you.
Yes. You. Okay, so that passes nine zero.
Okay. Next item, ice hockey cooperative agreement. We're going to move down under Board President Action. So we'll hold on that for the moment. And then we'll move to the internship agreement. And this is a resolution to approve the agreement with Syracuse University to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
So moved.
Gloria, can I, a second, Judy? Any questions or comments? To all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes nine zero. Thank you, Neil. Next, we have Board President Action. So first, we have the resolution to approve winter high-risk sports. And you have your resolution there for a second time. I'm not going to read through this, but this addresses all of the, it addresses the high-risk sports, basketball, ice hockey, competitive cheer, and wrestling. And underneath, they have the conditions as to which we are agreeing to. So can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'm moved.
Rebecca, second, Barb? Any questions or comments? I just have one question. I don't know if Dave or Marie answers. I remember last time we talked about wrestling and possible testing. I didn't know if that was, if you're still talking about that or if you came to the decision.
I'll, I'll start. At this point, we have not built testing in, but it's still certainly under consideration. I, I understand that earlier today, the Department of Health was saying that if we go above four percent, we may need to consider rapid testing for our athletes and coaches and others. So it's not in the current plan, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't add it as something that we may need to do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes nine zero. And so now that is approved, we'll go back up to the consent agenda to letter I. Let you scroll back up for a minute. Under Personnel Action, we had letter I, and we had the appointment of coaches. So can I have a motion to approve the appointment of those coaches? Gloria, second, Ben? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes nine zero. And now we'll go back down to the ice hockey cooperative agreement. That's under School Business Management, so you can look up there under Action Items. Can I have a motion to approve the ice hockey agreement? Rebecca, second, Luciana? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Passes nine zero. Next, we have a Board of Education Policy Adoption. We have letters A and B. This has to do with public participation at board meetings. Can I have a motion to approve these, adoption of these policies? Ben, second, Judy? Any questions about these? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes nine zero. Thank you. Next, we go to Board Committee Reports. We'll start with policy.
We're meeting tomorrow at eight.
How about business practices?
We met yesterday morning, and Mr. Noonie was with us and went through the bond issue. And it looks like the good news is we will, the bids are coming in lower than we forecast so that we should be able to get to some of the priority two and maybe priority three items, which would be just terrific. As you know, it was very hard to, to cut anything out. But we were, the amount we were approved for, that we, we will certainly be able to find uses for. And that was it. There's no date for a future meeting.
Thank you, Judy. Audit, Ben?
We have a meeting scheduled for February twenty-second at eight AM.
Thank you. Next, Communications, Gloria?
Yes, we met on February third. We had two items. The first, first one was the thought exchange, which Maria already covered, so I won't bother with that. But we discussed that for a long time. And the second item was the, we wanted to talk about the information we have on our website regarding COVID. So we took, Amy came, he came from, you know, our communication specialist and went over some of the things that were on that website. And we looked at that. We were pretty impressed with the amount of information that anyone could access from our website and the amount of use that it's getting. It's since September first, it's had over ten thousand three hundred twenty views. And then since December, it's had about half of that, five thousand four hundred. So it is being used. And we did not have anything to add to that website. I mean, it was real, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's excellent. And we set our next meeting date for March third at two thirty.
Thank you, Gloria. And then Equity and Diversity. Sorry, we wanted to just give an update because we haven't met. And I think the next meeting is.
It's February, I have.
It's February, I have.
February twenty-fourth. Moving on from committee reports, are there any other public comments that came in, Linda? And then last, from board issues, ideas and sharing, does anybody have anything to share?
I don't have anything to share, but just a thought, is it possible that we could move to in-person meetings soon? Does anyone have any feelings about that?
I think that would be great if we could. I mean, I, I would do it, but I prefer, I prefer this because it's just easier. I feel like accidents are here for more of you, and I know we're not in the building, so I didn't know if we need to also be exposing others or selves, if we don't need to. But I'm, you know, I'll be happy to build a group.
Can I say something? Just jumping, yeah. Thanks. It, I'm okay with either, but my concern that I had before, I was like, like, one of the biggest opponents to having in-person. I'm no longer concerned, so I feel okay having in-person meetings, but whatever the group decides is totally fine with me.
I guess considering the weather, I'm not great about driving at night in the snow and stuff, so I wouldn't mind waiting a while longer.
I really, it doesn't matter to me at all, but I think the issue is we'll have to be socially distanced, and when we did that in the fall, it was really hard to hear people. And this is just easier, I think, to hear.
Kelly, had your hand raised?
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that. I've had meetings, I do not like meetings with masks on, they are a real pain, you can't, you can't see people's faces, you can't understand what people are saying. I feel, I find this much easier to have actual conversations with people, as ironic as that is. So I prefer this, I'll come to the meetings, I don't have a problem with that, but I just, I think this is easier to communicate.
So maybe we can reevaluate then, Luciano, in like, when will be in February? And see how people feel, the weather's a little bit better.
Yeah, that's fine. I just thought I'd bring it up and, and see, because, you know, we approved the sports and everything, so, but yeah, definitely something to consider.
And I think also, if we wait longer, we'll see what the virus is doing and if things really are toning down, which may make some people at least a little more comfortable.
Hey, any other sharing ideas, issues? Well, okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn? Rebecca, second, Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes nine zero, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone, thank you.